It is 1:30, so I will call this special meeting of council of the municipality of Jasper to order for September 8th. Hopefully councillor Jurno will zoom in shortly. Councillors, you have today's proposed agenda, which is now fixed. We cannot add items without unanimity of council, and we don't have that unanimity. Still, I think I need a motion formally to approve the agenda. Councillor Demora, all in favor? There are none opposed? We have one item of new business. Face coverings in recreational facilities. And Mr. Virtue, through you, to staff generally, I understand that Mrs. MacDab or Mr. Todgem are available to speak to the matter?
Yes, your worship. I did send you a little note earlier, but Ms. MacDab is available too, just in regards to, maybe she'll cover it as potentially not just within municipal facilities, but the pools within hotels would have been something we may want to consider as well. So anyway, I won't preempt Yvonne's presentation. Yvonne, go ahead.
Mayor and council, so this came up as we were preparing to open. And the question that came forward was that it doesn't accommodate the activity center or the arena, or the aquatic center or fitness center for people that are engaging in physical activity. But we also noted in here that it doesn't provide any ability for Jasper physiotherapy or fitness classes that are privately run, or any hotel pools. So those are things that really we need to see into the bylaw that it would allow, because any physical activity, it's recommended that you don't wear a mask, and obviously in the pool, that can be hazardous too. So we have some wording from Edmonton and from Calgary in their bylaw, and it just indicates that people engaging in an athletic or physical activity. So it's pretty broad, but gives that ability for people that are actually exercising to be able to not wear masks while they're exercising. Any questions?
Just back to that, Yvonne, I think what we talked about was, you know, the intent being that the bylaw needs to look at, like first of municipal facility conversation was that we would be able to have council delegate the authority to staff by sign within the facility so that, you know, within a shower, or within the pool, or at the arena, like the actual what that condition would be would be by sign. So delegating the authority to staff to delegate, to direct by sign. But then just recently, this business came up with the other sort of similar activities within the community that we hadn't discussed with council yet, so.
And the plan is that anytime somebody is in the public area, they would still be required to wear a mask. Once they went into the workout space, so going into the fitness center, that will be accommodated by markings on the floor so that they will have their distance marked out for them. And then when they leave their workout area, then they would be required to put their mask back on, very similar to what the restaurants are doing right now. When you walk into a restaurant, you're required to wear your mask till you're seated. Once you're seated, then you can remove your mask.
I am just trying to bring up new proposed wording. Has that been provided, or just in the verbal report?
Yeah, your worship, we didn't, we just sort of had that new angle come up, and I apologize for that. There was like, I afforded you the note this morning while we were at the other meeting, but the, we don't have a proposed expansion of wording. I think it's important for, within the municipal facilities, that we have the delegated authority. Some of the authorities are provincial, what was talked about earlier with the restaurants or whatnot, but maybe similarly delegating authority to businesses within, with the physical activities or entities. I don't know, there's, I think we've done, the wording in here would take care of exactly what we need for the municipal facilities. It's how to expand it to include like pool hotels, physiotherapy, the classes at the school, whatnot, like that might also be impacted by that rule in the bylaw. So that's a new thing and kind of a just came up today kind of thing. So we don't, yeah, what's the wording you have there? Do you want to just?
Yes, I've got the city of Edmonton wording indicates that engaging in water activities or physical exercise would be exempt. So exempt people include engaging in water activities or physical exercise.
That would be for external organizations. I think internally, the wording within this proposed bylaw works for us though, because you can then set it by sign, because you have it, you know, on the pool deck, you can't, you gotta wear a mask on, in the pool, you don't wear a mask. Like, it's going to be more specific within your area.
Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. I would just like to thank administration for bringing the awareness to not only our municipal activities and our municipal facilities, but there are a number of businesses, including my own, that are impacted by this bylaw that, you know, we haven't necessarily considered yet, that has now been brought up by administration. But there are few businesses, but some businesses within our community that participate in physical activity, and I would say activity versus exercise, due to the nature of yoga studio in which I operate, that are impacted by this and currently not operating, not because of this, because of a number of reasons. But I think it's a really important factor to consider, not only our facilities, but also the private business that exists in our community.
Councillor Butler?
Thanks, Mrs. MacDab. And I also had concerns around this, two particular areas of concern. One was to encompass non-municipal activity oriented spaces like yoga studios, and I had thought also of hotel swimming pools. Also, I don't want us to amend the bylaw such that the general public space in the activity center is not subject to face masking. That should be subject to face masking. So I had thrown together some suggested wording. What I'm happy enough, in a sense, with what Edmonton has done, except I don't particularly like the openness of it, someone simply engaged in physical activity. I mean, it almost invites someone to do jumping jacks in the bank lineup, you know? So I suggest something like persons who have temporarily removed their face covering in order to, and that's from the last exemption we already have, in order to engage in a physical activity in a space operated and supervised by an activity service provider, and when physical distancing protocols are in place and enforced by the service provider. So to me, that means you actually have to be engaged in the activity. So if you're walking to the pool on the pool deck, you're probably still masked. It places some onus of responsibility on whoever it is that is operating the space to make sure that there are some, you know, protocols in place, and maybe relieves the municipality from being expected to provide those protocols, because protocols are out there from the province. So something like that, not married to any particular wording, but something like that to me would get it done, and maybe avoid us having to sit here again in a couple of weeks when something, someone that we haven't thought of comes and says, oh, well, what about my business, as councillor McGrath just suggested?
Councillor Keller-Herrenthi?
I'm just curious. So in the swimming pool, we walk from the dressing room to the pool deck, we take our mask off. Where are the masks going? Like, are we laying them down on the deck for someone else to, you know, meet me? That's, I mean, is there going to be something there, like where you can bag your mask? Or you bring a bag and they're somewhere to leave it so someone else doesn't touch it? But to me, so I leave my mask down, I get in the pool, I swim, my mask now has been on the tile, I come out, I pick it up, and I'm meant to put this back on. You know, I mean, like?
Sure.
Yvonne, go ahead.
I can, I can answer that. So the expectations are that somebody would come into the facility, go into the dressing room, remove their clothes, but have their bathing suit on underneath, put their clothes in a locker along with their mask, and then head into the pool area. So your mask is still with your clothes, it's not on deck, because if you get pushed in, if you're on deck and you get pushed in, you've got your mask on, which could be a severe hindrance for you to be able to breathe in the water. So they shouldn't be, you're going on deck to get into the water. You're not going on deck to mingle and participate and do exercises on deck. You're exercising in the pool and you're going from point A to point B. And that is acceptable by Alberta Health Services.
Thank you.
Councillor Butler?
Yeah, and I used the example, which is exactly one that doesn't make any sense of somebody walking on the pool deck, but to what I'm proposing, the proprietor would set up those protocols, as Mrs. MacDab said, that would be the protocol. Yeah, I am deeply concerned about the pushing in scenario. You'd have to be within two meters, or maybe you'd use a 10-foot pole.
I am certainly content to have our managers of the facilities figure out the appropriate strategies for distancing and mask wearing. I know from some research that I did, pools in Edmonton also provide patrons with a Tupperware container in some instances, and they put their clothes in that and take it to the pool deck, remove their mask, and put it in with their clothes in a container that stays on the deck, and then those containers are cleansed after each individual use, because they'd rather not have to clean lockers. So there are lots of options. I am comfortable with the fact that we can delegate to our staff some of the protocols for our own facilities. In terms of broadening the exemption to the private operators, I'm not sure who or whether anyone exercises a degree of oversight over the protocols. And so if a business has no protocols, what happens then? There should still be some mitigations required inside a business. So I would have to see the wording that is proposed to understand how the mitigations occur. I can understand, for example, another facility, private facility with a pool, there ought to be some sort of dressing room standards, but who manages those, who sets standards? I'm unclear how that is intended to be managed, or if it is intended to be managed through an amendment to our bylaw that expands the exemptions. Has staff considered that at all?
The line from Calgary bylaw, we felt, considered that, and it just says, people engaging, people engaging in athletic or fitness activity. So it covered both locations. Every business that opens is required to follow the Biz Connect and the relaunch protocol, and it is very specific for fitness centers, it's very specific for pools, and so they have to comply with those regulations in order to open those facilities in their hotel.
Well, thank you for that. There is some objective standard for then fitness centers and pools. Would an exemption in our bylaw apply to a dance floor at a nightclub or a bar? Is that an athletic or physical activity that would be exempt?
From what I was reading, those actually are covered under a separate guideline under Alberta Health Services. So there is specific to dance, there is specific to singing, there's specifics to casinos, so all of those types of things are listed separately in the guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Virtue.
Your worship, maybe just if the wording reflected the exemption of the bylaw as set out by the Alberta Health Services guideline for that particular activity, when we're trying to deal with these physical activities, because then as those change from week to week, our bylaw doesn't need to change. There's just some way, the linking section, and I'm not clear on the wording, like, I think, like, once again, I'll just say, I think for our own facilities, we could delegate that to staff to manage by sign, but I think for others to give that comfort that there are standards by Alberta Health Services for those specific activities, and we could then just name those in the bylaw, like, just as a general, as they change from time to time. I'm just trying to think of some way to deal with that without the minutia of detail in our bylaw.
Councillor McGrath?
Thank you. That's fairly close to what I was hoping to bring up as well. This pandemic from the start has lied within the authority and the jurisdiction of Alberta Health Services, and I feel like it's unfortunate that we have even had to wade into these waters. But we're here, and because we're here, we have to also acknowledge that each modality in each profession and each scope of practice already adheres to a professional guideline that's been set out for them. For the two designated professions that I hold, I have very differing scope of practice and guidelines that are applicable to each, and that's set out by the proper jurisdiction, by the health authority. So if we reference the health authority, it would cover, as it will likely change, as Mr. Virtue noted, and it has the specifics for each business that is already laid out. That's not work that I see applicable to this level of government.
Councillor Butler?
So I think that's a great direction that suggested by Mr. Virtue and councillor McGrath. I just was taking a really quick look here on the provincial website, and there is mention of all of these kinds of activities that we've talked to, indoor tracks, yoga studios, fitness classes, so squash and racquetball, rock climbing, gymnastics. So we could cobble together wording around when engaged in athletic or physical activity, which activity is addressed within, whatever that is, Alberta Health's guidelines, and said protocols are adhered to, and then we're not overlaying our own interpretations over Alberta Health. And as Alberta Health changes its protocols, then we wouldn't have to revisit our bylaws. So I think that's a great way to approach it. And if a physical activity isn't mentioned in there, then I guess the answer is no, you have to be masked, but I don't think there are any. I think everything that we could think of is mentioned in those guidelines. So, sorry, that was a long pause, but the same sentence. So arena sports is mentioned in this, and we wouldn't have to come back to this discussion when we open the arena, for example.
So I'm trying to come up with some wording that we could actually insert into our bylaw today, if we are to give it first and second reading, so that we will be in a position, at least with respect to our own facilities and presumably with other businesses, on or before September 21st. So I am beginning to think that perhaps the amendment could come to section 3.1, rather than under the exemptions, so that we now have a general requirement that in an indoor public place, you must wear a mask unless you're separated by a physical barrier. But could we add to that, or unless you are in compliance with protocols established for that facility by the province? Councillor Demora?
Well, and now that you said that, thinking about, you know, what you said about having the barrier with no mask on, and it was kind of brought to my attention on how we would regulate the area in front of the kiosk in the activity center with regards to the seating plan that's there for the cafeteria and stuff. If the cafeteria is open and there's some traffic in there, and I'm not sure, I don't want to get into the level of, like, what the leaseholder is actually governs and stuff, but I was just wondering if there's been some type of conversation or agreement on how that social interaction is going to work in our area, particularly if people are eating, and then there's, you know, I'm not sure whose jurisdiction that would fall under.
Mr. Virtue?
Your worship, maybe, just, that's where I'm just thinking, there'd be two parts to this. The, I think the wording in here that was proposed is good for our facilities with the addition potentially of the arena, just if we're going to name specific chunks, but that way, all those different, like, our, the complex has got so many different uses within the site, that by delegating the authority to manage by sign within the facility, we'll take care of that, and then the signs can change as the Alberta Health standards change, but then it's delegated to administration to do that. And then the wording proposed that then for others, other businesses and service providers in the community is through the Alberta Health Services guidelines, then as they change from time to time, then that, we don't have to, like, councillor Demora's question doesn't come up, because those other providers simply follow the provincial guidelines and our bylaw allows for it. Within our facilities, we will, and we'll manage it by sign, because it changes literally from room to room as you go through that facility. There's so many different uses in there, there's no way we could, you know, for someone else to interpret the guidelines, it's more like we will interpret them and post the signage for people to follow. I think that would be the easiest.
So for that particular area, if I may, if you have people waiting to talk to somebody that might be in an office somewhere, and then you're intermingling with people that are there to eat, or, you know, I just, who's, who monitors that? Like, who's in charge of making sure that everybody's following the right protocols? Is it the person working the front desk at the activity center, or is it, you know, somebody that's working or managing the cafeteria? So I don't want to get too far into the weeds. It's just like, how many signs, and that could get confusing there, and I understand about the other users, you know, we've got our dance, we've got our gymnastics and stuff, and they're, they kind of segregate themselves into their cohorts and/or their silos. I don't know what the proper term is, but they have their own areas. So this is kind of like a common one that could get a little different, you know? There's a common area in front of the aquatic and fitness center, but people are going there for the same purpose. You're either going in one direction or the other, and you have your place where you take your shoes off, you're obviously required to wear a mask in that area. But if I'm sitting there waiting to do something or waiting for somebody at a table, like, our, whose tables does that belong to? And then, you know, if you're going to get food and you have to take your mask off to eat, so, just something, I was just wondering if there was a conversation or if that was covered, and it was brought to my attention the other day, that, you know, had we thought about that when we were, when, or are we thinking about this when we're going into this meeting today? Thought I'd address it.
Potentially, I'll see if our director of culture rec wants to discuss this one. Yvonne, did you have something you wanted?
We are in the process of drafting up protocols for administration for staff to follow. So when people come in, so people will be required to wear a mask in the activity center until they sit down at a table to eat. The tables will be spaced appropriately, exactly like you do in a restaurant. When people walk in, they're required to wear a mask. When they sit down, they're not. And then it will be up to our leaseholder and our front desk to make sure that nobody's wandering by and chatting with those people that are sitting at the table.
I have a suggestion then, following councillor Butler's reference to, I think it is paragraph 4.1.6 of the existing bylaw. So if we amended that to say there is an exemption for persons who have temporarily removed their face covering in order to receive or provide a service, including an emergency medical service, and including persons engaged in an activity regulated by Alberta Health Services and are in compliance with all protocols established by Alberta Health Services for that activity. And then also maintain the proposed 4.1.7 for our own facilities. So the, the critical words there are activity. Is there anything that may happen out there that we would want to capture that wouldn't be described as an activity? Councillor McGrath?
So as you're explaining that, Mayor Ireland, my thoughts are going towards, I think the medical piece would be in reference to probably like life-saving techniques, where one wouldn't be wearing a mask. But then I'm thinking of, you know, as a massage therapist, both I and my client, by regulation of professional practice, need to be masked, but if I'm getting my teeth cleaned, it's not an activity. My hygienist is wearing a mask, or my dentist is wearing a mask, but I, of course, cannot. So I'm sure that there's other things, such as getting your teeth cleaned, that would not be activity. That would not be activities.
We have the word service in there already, so I'm trying to broaden that to, to include more, not less. So the services, if you need to remove a mask for a service. Cleaning your teeth, I think that is already covered. Other thoughts? Counselor Butler.
I agree with what you just proposed. Only, I mean, it's a very small item, but I would prefer to see as add a four point one point seven. Rather than. Included in four point one point six, simply because. It would be, it would. I think provide clarity to. Point the counselor. Graff just mentioned the first. Oh, six deals with. Receiving or. Providing a service, seven deals with activities. So I would keep it as a separate item. It's a very clear amendment that we're adding something rather than. Changing.
All right, so it would be. Four point one seven as it reads, and then four point one eight. Potentially to include. What I just referenced as an activity and leave. Four point one point six all alone. Is that, is that what you're now saying? Or is that what you said from the start and I didn't understand?
It was what I meant to say from the start, but I often don't know what I'm really saying. So I, I would. Reiterate in four one seven, I would reiterate the first line, persons who have temporarily removed their face covering in order to and then. Engage in a. So the wording that you just said, you know.
Right. This need not be between Counselor Butler and I, but. For the moment it is, and so. You see potentially at least. A bylaw amending the existing bylaw by adding two separate bullet points. I, I think. That's what I understood, and I would like to keep. Municipal facilities somewhat. Separate because there is that delegation. That Mr. Fritsch has, has alluded to, and I, I think there is reason to keep that separate, but. Certainly to add activities that are regulated by Alberta Health Services for other. Providers of activities or services that that makes some sense to me.
Yes, in all respects. Yes, in all respects. I, I guess. I'm not really seeing the need to specifically reference our own facilities. I don't necessarily object to it. I'm just not particularly seeing it because I think we have crafted sort of catchall. Phrasing and. Unless I'm missing something, I don't really see why we need to mention. Our facilities specifically. In a way, I'm almost concerned if we. Mention some. And then we come back to a conversation earlier today. Well, what about this space, for example, and we will not have mentioned that space? And so. Why did we mention some and not others? But if administration thinks it's important to mention our facilities specifically. Okay, I think of the library, for example, is that a municipal facility? Yes, or is it not? No. When we start listing municipal facilities. Are we going down a road that doesn't really achieve anything? I feel more comfortable simply referencing the activities that we're concerned about. And when somebody isn't involved in one of those activities, then. They're following protocols that we already understand to be in place. Like sitting and eating. In the lobby of the activity center, that's covered. Because those people are doing something that's already covered in our bylaw.
Mrs. McNabb. Is it the case that? For our facilities, you would follow. Protocols established by. Alberta Health Services, or would you? Narrow the parameters and provide guidelines that are. More strict. Than what might be imposed by the province.
We may. Make things more strict. An example of that is the fitness center where we have. The markings on the floor of, of the distance between pieces of equipment. And so somebody finishing that piece of equipment would not be able to enter another piece until. That person had cleaned it and left. So they may be. More, but that will be all through communication posters, those types of things. So. We will absolutely be meeting the Alberta guidelines.
Meeting, but potentially exceeding, is that?
Potentially exceeding.
Right. And so that is a point that I would. I would hope that the bylaw provides clarity for that because I, what I don't want is. Someone later complaining that. We are trying to enforce. Mitigations that are beyond the scope of the provincial legislation. If, if either. The municipality. As an organization or a private enterprise. Wants to take steps that exceed the provincial regulations, I think they ought to be entitled to do so. And that includes our own facilities, and that is why I like the phrase as it is that. You can establish your own standards so long as they meet the minimum requirements of the province. So for that reason, I. I think I see. A desire for. For both phrases in there. At some point.
I don't object, as I said, I don't feel that strongly about including facilities, but. I wonder if we should then. Be a little general, I just. Maybe we're destined to be back here reviewing this again. It's just. Particularly because we have to run an amendment to the bylaw by Parks Canada and so on. It becomes. You'd like to try to think of all options at one time. So I'm thinking, well, this space down here, it's a multi-use space. It's used for all sorts of things. It could be used. Somebody may want to run a yoga class down here, and if we've listed, we haven't. If we specified certain municipal, municipal facilities, but not this one. Are we back here again to amend the bylaw for one? Use? So maybe we should just say municipal facilities instead of. If we want to delegate that. Sort of authority for enforcing protocols, delegate them across municipal facilities. You know, then if the library has, I don't know, some children's activity. That they'd like to set up that might involve. Removing masks while physical distancing is maintained or something. People aren't. We're not backing them into a corner.
Would it be? Productive? To call a recess now and see whether. We can script something I. I called the special meeting. Trying to forecast when we might. Get third reading. Accomplished, given the need for certification and not. Pass our own projected reopening date of September twenty first. And that I think requires that we move forward, at least with first and second reading as early as possible. But it's important to have the wording. Absolutely accurate for a second reading. And so we might just take a few minutes now and. Call a recess and work on that. If we're going to make some progress today. Are people comfortable with that? Do we have? Miss Byrne, members of the public watching our proceedings? So I would propose perhaps fifteen minutes to work on this and then reconvene. So the public has a sense of when we're going to be back. Okay, are we good? Well, let's say eighteen minutes and because it is now. About. About that time, so. At, at two thirty, we will. Reconvene after a recess where we will try and work out. The exact wording of. An amendment which someone might then bring forward as a motion. So for those members of the public watching. Thank you all very much. This is how sausage is made and we will carry on and. Come back at two thirty, hopefully with some wording in place. Thank you. All right, welcome back. I will call us back to session. We have used that recess productively. To come up with proposed wording. Change to. The amendment. So we have a. Draft. Bylaw before us. Which provides. For an amendment. And I think with consensus now. We are comfortable with. The addition of. An amending clause being four point one point seven. Or added to bylaw two twenty eight, which would read. Persons who have temporarily removed their face covering. In order to engage in an activity regulated by Alberta Health Services. Or any other competent provincial authority. So long as such persons remain in compliance with standards established by such provincial authority. Or with such increased standards as may be established by the operator of the indoor public place. So. Mrs. McNabb, if, if you are still with us, the intent then is that for those activities regulated by provincial authorities. That will establish. The minimum standard required in an indoor public place, including our own facilities, but other facilities as well. But any operator of an indoor public place can increase that standard as they choose, and that would become the standard. And so that also would include our own facilities. So that is the intent. Is there a counselor who is prepared to make a motion that council read for the first time by law number two thirty? A bylaw of the Specialized Municipality of Jasper in the Province of Alberta to amend by law number two twenty eight, the temporary compulsory face covering by law twenty twenty. In those particulars. Counselor Demoto.
I just wanted to say that I would like to, but no one in their right mind would think that I came up with those words, even though I did. But only kidding, I would like to, I'd like for that to be moved by someone who. Worked a lot harder on that than I did.
Well, it, it will be a council vote in any event, so. I'd rather not relinquish the chair, but Counselor McGrath, thank you. You're going to make a motion that we. We read the bylaw. And so I will open that motion to debate. Anybody want to speak further? I think we've covered it all. I think for the, for the benefit of the public. Who were not. Privy to our, our discussions during the recess, the intent is, as I indicated. To allow operators of indoor public places, whether those are privately or publicly operated indoor public places. To set standards which are not less than. Either provincial health standards or other standards established by the province. They could be. They could exceed the standards provided by the province, but they cannot be less than that. And everybody would be treated essentially equally in that regard, that is. Municipal facilities and non-municipal. If there is no further debate, then I will call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed? That is carried. And might I have then a motion to read? Bylaw number two thirty, being a bylaw of the Specialized Municipality of Jasper in the Province of Alberta to amend by law number. Two two eight, the temporary compulsory face covering is by law twenty twenty. For a second time. Counselor Keller-Herempe, thank you. All in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. So Mr. Virchow, first and second readings have been given, so if that can be dispatched to Parks Canada. For certification at the earliest opportunity. And hopefully we will have certification. By this time next week, and so it can come back, we hope for a third and final reading. On September fifteenth. All good? Counselor Demoto.
Yeah, I just want to thank administration. For doing the legwork on that and pat on the back to council as well for being able to pull that together so quickly and. We're just, I know, I congratulated you first, but you're too busy chatting over there, but it's good. Congratulations.
All right. That is the sole item of business. We're not in a position to add any business to a special meeting. So I will ask for an adjournment of this special meeting. Counselor McGrath. Makes a motion to adjourn at two thirty seven PM. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.